Well, anyway, it looks like this is just us tonight.
Yeah, I'm surprised Dave didn't hear. I haven't heard from him.
Actually, he called me just about half an hour before I left.
Okay.
And said he would come if it was really important and critical votes to be had. But I think he didn't have any problems with the amendments as had been set up.
Great. Then I did hear from Scott, Darren, Kathy, and Jason.
Okay, so it is just us?
Yeah.
Well, now that we're all in order. Planning Board meeting, Jackson Planning Board, December 8th, 2016. Those present are Betsy Hardy, Chris McLeir, Bill Tarrant, Sarah Kemble.
Which is a quorum.
Which is just barely a quorum. And everyone else has called the save for one reason or other. They were unable to be there. So the first thing we need to do is to... Let's see about the minutes.
And those were in your packet? Did you already give them out to people who want to review them? Were they in the material left?
No, this is just in the stuff from the book. Do you all have copies of the minutes?
I read them.
Have them? Do you have any? Does anybody have any?
I have one I can pass around if anyone wants to review.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I think I'm a voting member today.
Yes, yes.
Go for it.
So Chris second. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the last meeting signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? There are none. It... Motion passed. Public comment on any matter not before the planning board this evening. Rick is here and we're going to talk about his issue under Other Business. And then I have a couple of other things for Other Business as well. So let's have a look at the proposed amendments. Does anyone have any changes or problems with them? I just have a couple of edits.
Oh, more edits, okay.
Well, no, that's simple, right down. And went through it with my proofreaders eye on instead of... Not just thinking content. 6.1.5, the way it's stated in the zoning ordinance, it is cluster single-family developments and multifamily residential developments. So if we can just switch it over to say, "Single cluster family and multifamily residential developments."
Okay.
Then it's just the same language as what is in section...
So it would read, "Single..."
Cluster single family.
Cluster single family.
And multifamily residential development. For minimum lot size for dwelling unit permitted shall be.
Okay.
And then in the chart, instead of just saying lot size, we should say minimum lot size.
So you hadn't made these changes, sir? Or are they here? Because I don't see them.
No, no, I'm suggesting, I'm saying, I'm saying.
Got you.
Since we have this moment before we go to post them for a public hearing next month.
So you're saying the chart, you mean which chart?
Was it units with one or two bedrooms, instead of just saying lot size and...
Should say minimum lot size in each instance, instead of lot size from...
So that, in other words, it's not, doesn't specifically have to be that size. It just, that's the minimum.
Okay, great.
And then the same thing with the second page for commercial uses and/or industrial uses.
The minimum.
The minimum a lot size allowed shall be the greater of the lot size from the table or the lot size determined by the formula. And you have to format the formula so that... So that says lot size from site-specific soil map tables. That second line should get shoved over to so it's underneath, because it's a mathematical formula. And then the 600 slash 2,000 gallons per day should be right underneath estimated daily discharge of sewage and gallons. In fact, if you just format it the same way it is presently in the zoning ordinance, it'll make sense mathematically.
Great.
There it is in black and white. Lighted or unlighted?
Yep.
And where are we going to...
As a struggle.
Put in minimum on the 6.1.5?
Minimum lot size, right at the beginning. So the minimum lot size.
Oh, okay.
Instead of that their lot size has to be that.
Okay.
Just minimum lot size.
Great.
See, that size is bigger.
And that needs to be underlined, because that was not part of the original wording?
Right.
Okay, good.
So would you underline the new stuff?
And just to comment on the...
Yeah, it's proposed. It's in italics.
Italics, okay.
It's in italics.
A comment on section 9.5. It's not to be changed, but Betsy and I ended up a presentation. And Scott had made a comment about how we should or should not include this language last time. It was very interesting to hear the comment. The reason for adding this in was to ensure that for unattached dwelling unit, separate accessory unit, the door ensures that you can convert the separate unit back into part of the house. If the house changes, he needs to change. And it enables the next owner, or the current owner, to make changes in how it's used. And that's why it was included.
So there was a purpose for it?
Yes, there was a purpose specifically for it in enabling the utility.
There was no safety?
No, no, it had entirely to do with being able to manipulate the use of the additional space.
Interesting.
So I thought that was very interesting, and that was very different than what we were talking about. So, can I think? Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Rick, you want to can you keep? You're awfully good if you can get the paper off.
I'm watching you struggle with it.
I could, I could pull it out of my teeth.
Nah, I'll definitely do it.
Save on that will work.
Yes, you don't need to floss, Matt. Any other comments or suggested changes? So we are ready to go take this to public hearing on the 5th of January.
Yeah, well, those changes, I think, were in good shape.
Good. So I think we're going to try to put it in the newspaper, advertise it on December 19th. Because it really doesn't need to happen until December 24th. But I figure there aren't a lot of people that are going to be looking on December 24th at that part of the newspaper. So I figure if we put it in on the 19th, we may get more people who are savvy about it.
Do you have to put it in once, or can you put it more than once?
It has to be in a certain number of days before the hearing.
Yeah, and so it's pricey. You know, we could put it in on the 20th or something or other if you feel the 19th is much too far in advance, but...
I mean, you couldn't put it in the 19th and an additional day beforehand? I'm not going to be looking at the 19th.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll put it in the ENAs.
Okay.
So it'll be out there in other places, but the official regulations has got to be in a circulation 10 days before, not counting the day it's in or the day of the hearing, so that really is 12 days before. And that gets right at Christmas time, so...
But we're still, we're going to hold it on 5th?
We'll hold it on the 5th. We'll advertise it on the 19th of December.
Okay.
Or whenever Julie can get a space for us there about. Okay.
Okay, I thought you were talking about moving the hearing.
No.
No.
Yeah, because we can't hold it on the 12th, because that's when the selectmen are doing their budget hearing. And that can take a long time.
Yeah.
What do you want to talk with us about?
I talked to the building inspector, and he threw me and all the paperwork to you guys, because we're going to, we would like to make the house behind us in the two apartments. Say, you know, one bedroom apartments. We're tearing down probably about 2,000 square feet a house. So it's still going to be 2,300 square feet a house. But, you know, part of it's a garage, too, so...
This is the house that you go buy your house in?
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the total square footage, you said?
The total square footage is 5,300 square feet before we demo.
Okay.
We demo, and I think Kevin said about 23, 2,200 square feet. Each apartment would be under 1,000 square feet.
Okay. So this isn't part of your residence that's a building behind?
No, we bought the Cabot Estate in June.
Oh, I get it, that one.
Yeah.
Way off to the left.
Yeah, basically directly behind my shower.
Okay.
Yeah. And that was our goal, is to chop it into two apartments if possible. And we'd still leave the garage for storage.
And why does that need planning board review and approval?
Ask Kevin.
I think Kevin was a little hesitant. He said it was a change of use.
Change of use is what he told me. It's like a gray area.
But it really isn't a change of use, because it's still a residence.
Yeah.
You know, it's still a dwelling unit, and it's a dwelling unit that is rented as opposed to being owned.
Yeah, we ain't changing the footprint, and we're just chopping. We already got the demo permit. We did all the tests for asbestos and all that, so... We got eyes across the street. We won't mention names, so keeps an eye on us. So we go through all the hoops, so, I mean, we got a dumpster there. We built it today, and we'll build it tomorrow.
How about that barn in back? Any plans for that?
Yeah, we've got residents already. We've got three Highlanders in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we moved down three, well, they're about six months old.
That was a nice-looking barn, but it needed some work, didn't it?
Yeah, we took the office. Well, he had an office in there, too, but you need hay storage. In a barn, you really don't need an office. So that's all hay storage, and we got three young girls down there, and two more coming.
Highlanders, Scottish kids.
If they could eat anything on my brother's lot up the street there, and they're fat, believe it or not. They love brush.
So are we certain that there's no reason why he would need to come back, that it is not a change of use really?
I mean, we're shrinking it. I mean, right now, it's got a four-bedroom set that we're shrinking it to two bedrooms. You know, we only have two bedrooms.
I thought it was two-bedroom apartments.
Yeah, two one-bedroom apartments.
Oh.
No, no, we just...
Oh, I thought it was two.
Two, two one-bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so there shouldn't be a problem there at all?
I mean, because it's, right now, on the books, it's for four-bedroom, you know, it's a four-bedroom system. It's got 1,500 gallon tank and...
So how come you don't want two-bedroom apartments?
No offense, we don't, we want workforce. We don't want families. I'm sorry.
Because the grammar school, you know, is desperate for kids.
Yeah.
Okay, you're not going to help.
We don't want, we didn't have kids, but afraid to act like the old man, so...
Okay.
But...
I mean, the driveway runs right by your house.
Yeah, it goes right by my house.
But I always, because we looked at the house.
Yeah.
And one time, and I thought that the driveway was a little bit intrusive to you.
Well, they were there first, and then the old man put me there. That was a play.
But is there...
It was a shared driveway.
I know, but could another driveway be put in? I mean, if I were you, I would love to have another driveway, rather than people tricking through the yard.
You got a whole loop, right?
Yeah, we could, I mean, we have one way out of it. I mean, you could do away with us using it, and we just use the other driveway that goes in front of our house. But then you wouldn't be able to get to the shop, so... But the price came down, and so we jumped on it.
Uh, okay.
So, I mean, we're putting the heating in. It's all electric heat. And we're not talking to Mrs. Cabot. She goes, "Oh, and we're not here. We're paying $500 a month to heat it." It's like, ooh.
So you said you've demolished part of it?
We've started to strip part of it, taken part of it down.
No, it was a big house.
Like you said, it goes, it goes on, like I said, 5,300 square feet. That's a big house.
Okay.
But the sills are rotted, the ants, I mean, it's basically a crawl space under it, so there's no foundation.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, the floor joists are rotted, and the firemen that were taking and...
And as I understand it, the lot is 3.9 acres?
Yeah, it's almost, yeah, it's almost four acres.
Separate from your lot?
Yeah.
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 It was quite a piece of property. I saw a listing, and I suggested it to someone, said, hey...
Well, it started, it started, it started like out of the fantasy land.
Oh, yeah.
565, come on.
Price kept on dropping.
Kevin asked me what we'd get from it. We told him. And God knows, I never thought we'd end up with it.
But that's nice. Now you've got some control over who's next to you.
Yeah, well, that's what we figured, and, you know, it's a nice, I mean, it's a nice law. I mean, the backlog got a hell of a deal in Washington. And it's, I mean, it's got a little bit of wet that goes down between the next lot that the old man sold. But you've got to be a fire enough away when it affects you anyways.
It seems that you're working within the same footprint.
Yeah, we're not.
And you're not changing.
We're not changing, we're, you know, working with what we got. We're shrinking it, but we're not blowing down the wall to make it bigger on any...
Yeah.
We're staying within the footprint.
Yeah, making it smaller, so...
Yeah.
We, I don't think the planning board has any issue with that.
No, no, Kevin just said, you know, change of use, you better go to you guys.
Well, we appreciate it. I mean, it keeps us in the loop. There might be times when, yes, we do need to...
Yeah, well, like I said, we've got eyes across the street. It keeps it pretty fluid. And it's like, I don't need him on my case. I just got rid of him two years ago, so I don't need him. So I just, you know, we're doing everything with Kevin. I mean, we did the asbestos test. They found some in the linoleum, so we had it removed, so... Oh, yeah, they still put stuff in it. That's what the woman we had from Hillmont come up.
Because that house was built, what, in the '70s or something?
76.
And asbestos, damn.
It was in the glue.
Yep.
And they, and some of it, they still find in Lowe's, in Home Depot, some of the cheaper stuff.
Still has asbestos.
And I, I thought it was long. No, no, the woman goes, oh, no, you can still find it today if you look. Not if you want it, but...
Try not to look, right?
They found it in the kitchen. Remember the old brick pattern that was popular in the '70s? It looked like brick. They found it in there, and they found it in the bathroom, believe it or not. Tillney, Tillney lived there for a few years. In the bathroom that he redid in mid-'80s, I guess it was, they found it in that glue. So we ended up that removed in the kitchen.
Okay, all right, well, it was nice that you stopped by.
Yeah, now you go home and eat dinner. Yep.
Yep, we learned a lot.
All right, so...
Now, if there's anything specific that, you know, I was looking at and saying, sort of planning board really needs to talk, maybe be a little bit more directive on that.
Yeah, well, like Kevin said, it's, you know, change of use, kind of a little gray area, he said.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think he's being cautious.
Because I was, I was working wood up with Dick, so I said, "Dick, I'm filling this out." He goes, "It looks good to me," and then Kevin called me. "You better go see if you can get on your agenda."
Well, it's better to be safe that way than sorry, right?
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
You, too.
See ya.
I'd just like to add one thing on Other Business. I hear that Hank has been doing this now for five years. And I think it's a really valuable service to the town. I think he's contemplating putting in a request for a little bit of an increase on what he's paid. And I really think that that's a valuable service to us, so...
It definitely is, because I was able to attend last month's meeting this afternoon.
Great.
And to make sure that everything that we had put in as far as changes in the proposed amendments, that actually we did get everything in.
Great.
That was discussed last time, so that was very helpful.
So I hope that you will submit a request for a little bit of an increase and see if they won't say sure. And it'll be reflected in the minutes, and we appreciate your work.
Definitely, and thank you. Speaking of money, I got an email from Julie saying that our budget for this past year has been 3,500, and we only spent 1,228.
You're going to really start working.
Sounds like a party to me.
And a trip?
Well, well, anyway, I think it was bumped up last year because we anticipated having to print the master plan.
Right.
And...
And we are still expecting to do that, but I don't know if we can carry it over. We're not going to get it... Oh, have you got it set?
Yeah, I'll pass it around. I just made one copy with all the pictures in it. And this is on my own printer, so it, pictures are a little fuzzy. But it needs to have a signature page and an acknowledgements page, so it's not complete yet, but I thought that we'd get it. And pictures came from the chamber. It's Kathy Driscoll?
Yes, Kathleen Driscoll, yep.
She had some, a lot of photos of Jackson around. Scott Dager had some gorgeous photos of natural, the turtles and the moose, and some of the scenics in there are his. And I got pictures of, from the school, so there's kids there. And there was one picture of the kids with the fire department. And it was a great one. And then that last one is my absolute favorite. It's a bunch of the kids skiing up in, at the Black Mountain.
Right, I recognize a number of... Well, I taught there last year. I'll be doing it again this year.
Great.
Oh, okay, right. And then also, I got some pictures from Bree Torrey of the skiers.
Mm-hmm.
It's great.
One thing that we do need...
And Kathleen Dordy took a bunch of pictures of the buildings around the...
One thing we're supposed to have in it is a map of future land use. I don't know if we really dealt with that. I'm not positive if it's really required. Let me just look at the requirement chart.
I think we have to talk about future land use, and we have it in the text, but...
Was it just a map of land that has potential for, it does specify what it, or does it, in different categories, or what?
Well, I don't see...
Our current one has an existing, you know, what our land use is right now.
Because as far as land use, that would be in a zoning... In the zoning, if you have different areas that are zoned, a lot of towns like Conway has a whole bunch of different areas, and that's saying, well, this is where we want to have commercial, this is where we want to have residential, this is where we want to have industrial, et cetera. I don't see that a map, future land use, would be anything different than zoning. I mean, if we want to say these specified uses for different areas, then we should change the zone, which is something that we might consider.
Okay, it doesn't say that we have to have that. That's one of the options. I think we're okay. Great.
Well, getting back...
So good.
Getting back to the budget.
Yeah. Did you say we're allotted 3,500?
It was 3,500 for this past year.
Uh-huh.
And I, oh, we might need to get some quotes as to how much it would cost to print a bunch of... Because we can put it up on the website.
Yeah.
With all the color pictures and everything, and the whole background. And that can, we put that up as a PDF.
Yeah.
Right on the website, and if anybody wants to print it out, they can. But we should have some copies available. And we have copies that we printed up for the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
That, several copies there that were for all the people that came to the public hearing.
Well, I bet we can produce this as a nice booklet. It might be a little bit smaller. And I bet it's not going to be all that expensive.
Just that, that much, and the background information?
Yeah, that would be separate on the website, because not many people look at that all day. I'd be surprised if anybody does, other than us.
What was the money that was spent this year? What was that spent on?
I don't have a listing of what...
It's interesting, the way they do it. So let's say we have to send out a batch of letters for an application that comes in, or something like that. We have to submit payment to the registry of deeds. So those various things come out of our budget. Even though the people who pay for those, the money that, let's say, Robert Seer's place at Nestle Nook, we approved, I think, some things there. So the money that he paid in goes into the general fund, but gets expended from our money.
Okay.
So you wouldn't see it offset at all, but it typically is offset by the money that comes in. So...
All right, but we do, if we have any legal advice, other than what we can get from the municipal association?
Yeah, and I think we did print this. Yeah, we printed this, so that was $170 maybe, or something.
And we'll have to, if these amendments pass, we change them, we'll have to do another printing. If this affects more than Dave.
And we'll have to print these amendments for review. You know, I don't know if we'll print them this calendar year or next calendar year, but for review by people, let's say, I guess when we put it in the newspaper on the 19th, it will say copies are available at the selectman's office. So we might have 10 copies, so that if people came in and wanted to see what we're proposing before the...
But they'll see what the existing ones are, too, there.
Well, they would, well, what we're proposing will have hashed out existing.
Just like this. What this is...
And it'd be, the existing would be crossed out?
What you, that's, that's what you have now. Anything that's in regular type is what is existing now. And anything that we're suggesting to add is in italics. And anything that is existing right now that we are going to delete is crossed out, as it says right in the top.
Okay.
Sarah, you've done such a good job on this. That's wonderful.
A question, budget, what's our fiscal year?
Calendar year.
Is that a calendar year fiscal year?
Yeah.
Yeah, the calendar fiscal year.
I wasn't sure.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Tax year, tax year is different, and I remember...
The whole, the town as a whole is on the fiscal, the calendar year.
The calendar year. The calendar year for fiscal year.
The only thing it's not is the school system, which is on a June 30th to.
Right.
Excuse me, July 1st to June 30th.
Yeah.
But everything else is calendar.
Okay, I wasn't sure based on the back of the town meetings where it's at.
Yeah, it's bizarre because the budget is not approved before, you know, until town meeting.
Right.
For the budget that we're already in, so to speak.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Which makes, well, never mind.
Yeah.
And then the tax, the tax is.
Your paying tax, your tax is based on previous year and then the second one is for the current year to make a difference and.
Right, treacherous, and it's very strange when only seller, it's weird that you have to pay the seller taxes.
Yeah, well, it all works out once you know the system.
So typically, we send things out to Minuteman Press.
Okay, yeah.
Should we do that?
Can, yeah. I don't have it, I need to get Dick's signature on this and I need to type up the acknowledgements page.
Okay. Great.
Once I know everybody to be listed on that.
So as soon as you have that ready, I'll take it down to Minuteman Press and try to work with them on a format, you know, the size and so on.
If you shrink it, it won't be readable. Or it will be much less readable. If you wanted a smaller size, I would have to completely redo that.
Oh, wow.
It would banish you a smaller size, is it?
Well.
Not going to be significantly cheaper, I wouldn't think.
Because that's, that's regular paper.
Right.
I mean, I did it on.
Because this is a 12, right?
No.
Font, 12 font?
Oh, I know, it's either 1 or 12.
It's like 14.
Well, certainly before we print it out, we can have an opportunity, you know, maybe even at the, well, we won't have another meeting before the end of the year. I can certainly send it around to people when we get it in the final form. If it is going to shrink at all, we can see whether it's acceptable.
Well, the thing is that if you, you shrink it, you're going to, the way to get the best deal out of the printer is to find out what paper they have, the paper size that they work with, and then.
Yeah.
Do it so that they have the minimum amount of wastage.
Right.
And then if they, if you want something slightly smaller and they have to cut everything down a little bit.
No, you don't want to do that.
It becomes more, and I think eight and a half by 11 is a, is a standard size.
Right, typically, they might do it on the eight and a half by 14 or something rather to fold it.
That's another possibility.
So we'll see, we'll just see what the options are and try to make sure that it's still legible. Why don't, whenever I get, if I get a sort of approval from them and it's going to be smaller, I'll run it by you and see if you feel it's adequate.
All right, I mean, I have that, oh, that is in a PDF right now.
Mm-hmm.
But I need to add the extra two pages.
Okay.
It's in, the original is in Word. Okay, what else do we have? The selectmen had a amended driveway permit and inspection policy for driveways, which sent this, new copy of this to the planning board. And essentially, it means we have to make a little change in our subdivision regulations.
Okay.
In that, well, let me just read it. That number one, all roads and driveways shall meet the requirements of the Town of Jackson zoning ordinance, section 9.02 of the subdivision regulations. All roads and driveways must comply with the Town of Road, Town of Jackson road standards and the subdivision regulations. And section 12 of the subdivision regulations states that the enforcement of the regulations is vested with the selectmen. It will be, it will be policy for the town road agent or building inspector to assure the adherence to these regulations. So I don't know if we need to change section 12 of the subdivision regulations to reflect that. And subdivision regulations are, don't have to go, go to the town, it's just regulations within the planning board. So whatever we do to the subdivision regulations, just has to make the approval when we're toward the planning board.
So what part of section 12 is it going to change? What do we have to do in here?
It says, well, I'm not, not quite sure what's being changed.
Well, I think the thing that's, it's not changing, if I understand that correctly, what I understand it to say is that the, that they're making a statement as to who will be responsible for ensuring that it's going to be maintained.
The town road agent or a building inspector will assure the adherence to these regulations.
So we already say that the enforcement of these regulations is vested with the selectmen.
And so they're, apparently, they're just adding that instead of the selectmen going out and making sure all this happens, that the town road agent or the building inspector can do that.
It says here, it's like a building inspector, it's local authorities, it doesn't say the road gap, but that's either here or there, because they're local authorities, I would guess.
So is that really different or, I mean, it doesn't sound all that different. Or just more clear that they're allowing that either, it's either this or that that's allowed for.
Right.
But still, their responsibility is vested in them.
And so the selectmen are testing the road agent, the building inspector, to be able to.
Yeah, it seems to me that that, by it being vested with the selectmen, it doesn't say they will do it, but they will make provisions as to how it will be done.
Make sure it will be done. So I don't know if we need to change anything, but for some reason, this was an official, it said amended driveway permit and inspection policy for driveways within a subdivision. So we have been informed as to the action of this.
Okay.
Yep. Why don't we have a copy of that available in our subdivision regulations? You know, we can make a copy for each of us sort of thing and have it in our regulations. And then when we do update them, we can make mention of that. Would that suffice? I can make some copies right now and give them to each of us or we can?
Yeah, or we just have them at the next meeting.
Okay.
And just add them to our subdivision regulations.
Great.
This was.
It's really for our, it doesn't make any difference really for part of the regulations, I guess.
And this was emailed to me, so I can email it to you.
Okay, great.
All right.
That was easy.
And, well, we still haven't decided on the budget. Should we keep it at 35 or?
I think it's probably smart to keep it at that. We don't want to increase it because we might not get approval for it. And you never know, we might get more applications next year. Even though the money will be reimbursed, it's still going to be gone from our budget.
And it's not a large number if you don't spend it.
It just goes back on the job, fine.
And we will have to reprint our zoning ordinance, assuming that the regulations pass.
So you, you sure it's not carried over?
I don't know.
No, there's no such thing as a carryover in a budget.
Pardon?
There's no budget carryover.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very unusual that it would be carried over. There are very rare instances, there's some sort of wording that it will carry over, but normally now.
You'd end up having to have a prepaid process occur or for something to carry over, but it doesn't happen. Usually what happens in a budget process for a town expenditure is that if it's not spent in the fiscal year, then you have to reappropriate it in the next year and make it part of your planning process. Not that, unless it's a specific warrant item.
What if it's something that you have already purchased, but the bill hasn't come yet? Does that then, then the bill gets paid later?
If it's something that's been purchased and the receipt is, that's been spent in that year. It's not that whether you.
Whether you have the money or not.
Right.
Okay.
You already did the spending.
Okay, yeah, so it's a case of that you wore an article to buy a certain piece of equipment and then you just don't do anything about it.
Right.
Okay, then it's tough luck. Okay, I had, when I heard about what Rick Davis wanted to do, I was curious to see whether it would fit in with what we are proposing. And as far as using the soils amendment. And what I did was to get off the, I'll just type one copy of this here. The town website, you can get the tax map. So the tax map of the area, so I see it was 3.9 acres, so I know which plot it is. And say, well, if this was something that was just coming up for us and we had to decide, would we use the Carroll County Soil Survey or have them do a soils analysis? I then photocopied out, just to use this as an example, how we would use the Carroll County Soil Survey.
Thanks, good.
And the, and I have it for you. I think there's a copy here in the office somewhere, but I, just in case, brought my own. Now, granted, this is, the date on the soil survey is 74 or something? 1977.
77.
Somebody did a lot of work. Anyway, so the whole, you have all these maps, which is for the whole county. And then you see the different areas. And each one of those three letters, symbols stands for a different type of soil. And if it is the second letter is lowercase, that means that was medium intensity. So they sampled it a little bit more carefully. And if it's just three capital letters, then that's very low intensity. And if you look at the area, which is in National Forest Service, that's done very big blocks. And those are, each one of those symbols is a name and there's a.
A key?
There's a key here. It's a three-page key in fine print. Okay, so looking at the area that, to see what the soils are in that particular parcel, it's M, 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 D, C, M, D, D, which I wrote up at the top. And those are, it's Marlowe. The C stands for the slope. And a B slope is, is 0 to 8% slope. And a C is 8 to 15, and a D is 15 to 25. And E is, is greater than that. So you can see M, E, E, that gray big section is going up Tyrell, I think, yeah.
It wouldn't be Tyrell because Tin, that would be to the, to the north of Tin Mountain and Tyrell is to the south.
Oh, wait, right, I know, that's not Tyrell, that's.
The area that we're looking at right here, it's right here.
Well, the M, E, E does go all the way over toward Tyrell.
These two, these two.
I'm just saying, does it help you?
Parts right here are pretty much where that property is.
Okay, yeah, Tyrell. You can see, this is on top of a.
If anything, it might go into the R, R, I, B, but I doubt it.
Okay, but in any case, the, so we find out that it's essentially Marlowe and Ridgeberry. And from there, you go to the soil-based lot sizing. And Marlowe.
Marlowe's good stuff.
Marlowe, yeah, Marlowe, most of Jackson is Marlowe. And then looking up here in category three, which is Marlowe, then it gives you the minimum lot size for the different slopes. So we're talking Marlowe 8 to 15 is 60,500 square feet, minimum lot size. And then D, which is steeper, is 67,500. And Ridgeberry is a category five because it's very stony. And so that, but it's not that Ridgeberry is B, it's not as steep. So Ridgeberry is 106,000 square feet. All right, so down at the bottom, an acre is equal to 43,560 square feet. A number that you should have written on the inside of your forehead, the value of pi and a few other things. You know, these constants that we all know about.
Right, of course.
And that a liter is 1.1 something or other, quarts, you know, all those. But so 3.9 acres is 169, almost 170,000 feet, square feet. And looking at if it's partly Marlowe and partly Ridgeberry and we just have one house there, we have plenty. So there's no need for any special.
And considering that it's going to be two, two one-bedroom units, if your minimum requirement is based on four bedroom, then you can.
Then you're fine. So that, that's how you can use soil surveys.
It's clearly, it's.
Clearly it's. Right. Anyway.
I just wanted to cause trouble.
Good point.
Clearly this is.
It clearly exists. And since it is a lot of record with a house on, then it really, we wouldn't even consider that.
Right.
I, I was curious and I thought, well, hey, this is.
Yeah, it's a good exercise just to show people how it works.
That's how it works. And we now have the planning board to see.
And we also can't take a photograph of this group because it would show that we're not a complete group. So I don't know what we want to do about that.
Well, we have, I think we could do it at the public hearing.
Okay. That's right, that wouldn't be too late. Okay, good.
Because, and then I also have to make a report for the town, a report.
Right.
For the planning board.
And typically, what I do to prepare for that is a list of the approvals. I'll send that to you.
Okay.
And you'll be able to quickly do your report.
Thank you. Yeah. I'll have to look back at past reports and see what we say.
Okay.
All right.
So you can tell this was done a long time ago.
Oh, yeah, that's aerial photo from the.
Well, the aerial photo, you get all the slopes of Tyrell visible.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. And you don't have Grover Road because it didn't exist back then.
What road?
The road that goes into, it's called Grover, Grover Road.
It borders Rick Davis's property on the right side and it provides the beginning of his loop. And then it goes on back and it's occupied, there are maybe three houses back there, so I'm not sure now.
Gets access to the path of those lots.
There was a time when it seemed that every month we were getting a new revised application about Grover Road back four, five years ago, six years ago, maybe.
More like every year. More like every year, something new would come up.
But sometimes it seemed that, you know, we just approved it, and all of a sudden a revision would come in. Good to put that one to bed.
Okay. Any other business to be brought to the planning board tonight?
Welcome to the chair, I'll say it.
All in favor? I am, yeah.
That was easy.
Yeah.
Well, I find this very interesting, but, yeah, a little confusing, obviously, to...
Well, right, it's the first time I see it, yeah.